Go ahead and call the meeting of September 3rd, 2019 for the Eureka City Council to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Seaman?
Here.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Messner?
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Here.
Councilmember Allison?
Here.
Councilmember Burgel?
Here.
Will everyone please join me for the pledge of allegiance? Okay, Mr. City Attorney, do we have a report out from the closed session?
Mayor, no final actions were taken in closed session.
Thank you very much. Now, we are moving on to the mayor's announcement, and I believe we have a proclamation which will be read by Councilperson Burgel.
So, Danette, are you here to come receive this?
No.
You want, let's move this one, though, we'll do the poet laureate first, because I know they're here.
Okay, great. Let's do that.
Is that okay with you, Councilman Castellano? All right, so we'll go first with announcing a new presentation of the poet laureate program.
Okay, so some of you have been following the, this is the inaugural year of Eureka's poet laureate program. Kristi Patterson and myself got together and kind of brainstormed this, and then met with members of the Arts and Culture Commission to, and the Development Department, to really fine tune the poet laureate program. And so, we did have a really fantastic panel meet of different writers and poets in the community. And so, we have two youth poet laureates and one adult poet laureate, and they're all here tonight. So, I would love to bring them up to the front and announce them and the role they'll be playing for Eureka in this upcoming year. Can we have Harvey Mitchell, and Izzy Unzinger, and David Holper come on up? Great, and so firstly, thank you all for kind of embarking on this first year of this program with us. It's, I think it's going to be really exciting to have your voices present here in the community. I mean, you're already here, but you know, but at this now, at the civic, on the civic level. And I personally am thrilled to, that I'll get to see you throughout the year and hear your words and what you're, what you're bringing to the community. So, if you would like to read a poem, you're welcome to, or say anything, and of course, you're not obligated to do so. Thank you again.
You have to go to the middle, middle one.
My bad.
No, that's okay, and you can pull it down if it's more comfortable for you.
There we go. Hi there, everyone, it's a wonderful thing to be here today on a Tuesday night. I just can't believe that I'm here, it's incredible to me. I started writing poetry in eighth grade year around December, and I wrote it for a guy I liked. It was as simple as that, I was like, okay, this is traditional, we'll do this, and I found out I enjoyed it. And while I did not get the guy, I got the poetry, which was something way better and more valuable for me. So, the poem that I'd like to read to you today, well, tonight, is a poem that I wrote for a school-wide competition at Eureka High. It won first place in 10 through 9, or freshman through sophomore year. And it was about how inspiration is an incredible thing, and we should not give up on it even if our generations are slowly losing that touch. This poem is called "Similar." A pen, not unlike a person, has a purpose. A pen dances across a page, curling scripts and letters to the talent of the hand. A pen, the page explodes with the colors, and a pen, not unlike a person, has the ability to change the world. With a single stroke, a pen inspires as a person and a pen should. Thank you very much, and I look forward to working with all of you, it's going to be a fantastic year, I think.
Thank you. Congratulations.
So, as the adult poet laureate, I'm tasked with writing four poems during the year, so I already wrote number one. So, I've written a number of poems prior to this on the local area, so I've written about Pugetl Island, I've written about the skunk cabbage trail up in Redwood National Park, so I thought I would write something about the North Jetty. So, here it is, "North Jetty." I have come here for nothing. To write a poem is such a useless effort. Even if the poem comes to something, what good will it do? Will my sitting this morning at the mouth of Humboldt Bay on a concrete block, watching the swells roll in off the Pacific, change anything? Will it, for instance, feed a starving child? Or teach someone to read? Or cause someone to abandon a prejudice poisonous enough to make them pick up a gun and slaughter everyone in sight? Surely not. All a poem can ever do, I imagine, is to bring you this moment, as a cormorant lifts off, wingtips beating blue water, until it leaps into the air, disappearing. As for me, I vanish from the beach, pocketing a sand dollar as I go. When I set it on the porch rail and laid her sleep, it is your job to notice how the full moon rises, casts its pale light over this place. That is the most that can be expected from any poem, this great beauty which defies utility, shining down on each one of us. Thank you. So, in addition, I was tasked with giving a reading here publicly, so, you know, I have to say I'm doing two in the next two weeks. One of them, I'm doing tomorrow night at the Humboldt County Library with three other slam poets from the Humboldt County Slam, which meets every first Thursday of the month at the Siren Song Tavern. So, the two founding women who founded it, Vanessa Pike and Teresa Fitzmaurice, are going to be reading, as well as Anne Frick, who's been part of that slam for a long time. So, the four of us are going to read for an hour at Humboldt County Library tomorrow night at 6:00. And then, the following week, I'm reading up at Humboldt State, and it'll be on September 11th, up in the library at 6:00 o'clock. So, if you're interested, come see the poets tomorrow night at the library, right here in Eureka, and thanks for the time, and thanks for the honor of being poet laureate.
I, I don't have a poem prepared, but I just wanted to say thank you. I started writing way before I even remember, and I was just doing it because I really, really liked it, and it just kept opening more and more doors, and I want to encourage that in myself and in other people who are like me. And that wouldn't be possible without people like you, so I'm, I'm so happy to be here, thank you so much.
Thank you to all of you, and congratulations, and I'm looking forward to seeing what you come up with. Does anybody else have anything they want to add?
Could I take a photo of you all with Leslie, with Councilmember Castellano? Okay, great. And Kristi, thank you.
Kristi, did you want to say anything?
No, thank you.
Okay, that's fine. And before all the poets run off, next is, Access Humboldt is going to do a quick presentation, and the only reason I mentioned the poets is they just posted today that they on KZZH are airing poetry. It's a national podcast, but they're looking for local, for local entries. So, I think that you all ought to talk to each other, I think you might already be in touch with David, so. I look at all these poet lovers in the, in town today. All right, come on up, Sean, and tell us about Access Humboldt.
Aloha, Council, thank you very much, and to everybody else who's here. I just wanted to report back, we were here with folks from Internews, sharing with you a project that we're working on, which is the Eureka Information Ecosystem Assessment. And I wanted you to know, we're releasing the report tomorrow, so you get the sneak preview, and actually, if you go online, you might be able to look at it now. It's at, on the web, on our website at accesshumboldt.net. So, if you just go to our main webpage, you'll see the Information Ecosystem Assessment. It's about a 30-page report. It reviews, and I'll just, for those who don't know about it, it was a process that we worked with. Internews is an amazing local organization, we don't think of them as local, because they're a global NGO, non-government organization, working around the world, helping people find their voice and develop media in really mostly third-world situations. So, we thought, gee, maybe we could learn from third-world situations and adapt our media that way. Anyway, the process was desk research, that is, we looked at the media marketplace, what media outlets are here, what kind of audience reach they have, things like, you might not know, the designated market area that we're in is called Eureka. It's Humboldt County and Del Norte County, and broadcasters use this to set advertising rates and to do ratings. So, we're in the DMA, Designated Market Area, of Eureka, as you know. So, we did desk research, we did listening tours, where we went and visited different areas of the city and interviewed people on the fly, like outside of Winco, and at the flea market, and things like that. We did a couple of Global Cafe convenings, where we had sort of organized discussions around the topics. We did some tabling at public events, and we did key informant interviews, and I think several of you at least were inter, were, we were able to interview, and through that process, and many others. And we conducted a focus group with media, local media, news media people. So, just very quickly, I'll share some of the key findings. In general, now this is Internews looking at Eureka and Humboldt County. In general, for the size and level of wealth that we have, Eureka has a diverse array of information resources. That is, compared to other places, we're actually in pretty good shape. Eurekaans generally have access to an information source that they trust. There's ways to get information and to find out what's going on. People expressed generally, they need better information that helps them actually engage ongoing in stories. Like, people would comment, gee, we heard about a problem, but we never heard any follow-up. What's about what's happening to address that problem, there's no ongoingness to news coverage. The, a finding that there's consolidation of ownership and potential closures threaten to degrade the media ecosystem. And we certainly have seen that in the decade-plus that I've been here, we've seen a reduction in local news media. Just jobs in journalism are fewer now. Information access and usefulness is particularly limited and fairly severely for minority communities, particularly non-English-speaking community, has a very difficult time finding information, accessing it that's useful to them. And the other key finding that I really liked is, compared to everywhere else in the world that they've worked, Eureka stands out in our optimism. Everybody they talked to, even if they complained, they thought, yeah, we can do better, there's, we're hopeful about our future. So, those are the key findings. Then they made some suggestions, and I won't spend a lot of time on these, but I do want to remind you that this is an ongoing process for us. Some of their suggestions were to work with the existing news media outlets and develop some collaborative, what's called solutions journalism, where you add the efforts of multiple news organizations to follow stories and really get a deeper reveal on issues. And homelessness and drug issues were among those key issues, and there are other issues identified, homelessness. That there really should be a unique dedicated efforts to serve the underserved communities, particularly tribal members, Spanish-language speaking community, Hmong community, as particularly identified underserved communities. And that we should look at maybe creating some dedicated channels for gathering, for listening, and specific programs for addressing community concerns. And this is sort of a specialty of the Internews folks, and this project that we, we're connected with now is called the Listening Post Collective. So, one of the follow-up steps, you're going to see us sort of putting listening devices out in the community for people to just say, oh, you want to speak your mind? Walk up to that fish sculpture, or the otter, maybe the otter sculptures will use some, I think people think. Tell the otter what you want, and we'll record that, and we'll put it on the radio, or put it on TV. We'll just make it easy, we'll, we'll bring the recording devices to the community and place them where people who aren't normally heard from will get their voices heard. I think one of the ones that is at a sort of community anchor level, very exciting to me, is identifying synergies with the public library system. We have a real opportunity to develop our, our local libraries as local information and media hubs of connectivity. All the libraries in California are getting super-fast internet connection. We're going to have gigabit speed connections at every library before long. And in lots of parts of our county, that'll be by far the fastest connection that you'll find. So, working with the library to bring information resources to communities like Willow Creek. What's going to happen when Willow Creek has a gig connection at the library? There's nothing else like that anywhere around there. So, what kind of asset could that be in the information ecosystem? So, we're very excited about those. And that we should really continue to look for new models for community access. And you, you will hear, and certainly your city manager has been following the, I don't want to call it devastation, but the federal policy right now is that you guys really shouldn't have so much authority to do anything. And that maybe the cable company ought to do what they want, and they shouldn't have to pay so much to this community. Maybe they shouldn't have to provide channels. Maybe they shouldn't have to provide funding for Access Humboldt. So, the FCC has actually just done a rulemaking, which is very threatening, and we're hoping it gets tied up in court before we see the impacts here. So, our next steps will be, we'll be conducting further research. We started with Eureka, we'll be looking at other parts of the county and filling in the map of how people get information and what they do. We'll be launching some initiatives, like the Listening Post idea, you'll, and we'll be looking for ideas. We're inviting the community, really, to respond to the report, so we'll be pushing out the full text and content of the report. And let us know what we got right, what we got wrong, what you think we should be doing next. And we'll be working with Internews to attract funding and other partnerships and support to do it. Just want to end on one really interesting, on the innovation side, this is a really fun work to do. The way the technology is going, and this is a little, I'm a little ahead of the curve here, but just bear with me a second. So, we identified Spanish-language speaking people are not well-informed. We record your meetings gavel to gavel. We run that through a video service that people have heard of called YouTube. We get out of that a voice-to-text transcript of the meeting in English. Then, we take the English transcript and we run it through translator. So, now, we can provide you with a Spanish-language text version of your city council meeting. Now, how good is the quality of the voice-to-text in the first step? How good is the translation in the second step? But you see, it's getting there, and we will be experimenting with this kind of technology that's available now to sort of demonstrate that, we'll work with those communities, is it working? Does this really help, or is it just gibberish? We'll, we'll find out. But that's the kind of innovation that we're really known for, and we're excited to pursue. This project with Internews helps us to ground it in the, in the global picture, what's happening in the world, and locally in terms of who wants to have a voice. And how can we maintain one of the healthiest information ecosystems around, which we happen to have right now? So, thank you for this opportunity to present, and I invite you to check out the report and let us know what you think.
Thank you, Sean, and does anybody have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot. Aloha.
Okay, now, we're going to take a step back in the agenda and read a proclamation for National Recovery Month.
Okay, is there someone here to receive this proclamation? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read it into the record then. So, "In recognition of National Recovery Month, September 2019, whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental and substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance abuse disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles both physically and emotionally, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and substance use disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support systems. And whereas countless lives have been damaged by drug use in Humboldt County, loved ones of drug users and users themselves, and whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, and to see people that are in recovery and succeeding, to show others that recovery is possible, and Eureka, California invites all residents of Humboldt County to participate in National Recovery Month in September. We would like to kick off this month with an annual picnic, recovery happens. Our community as a whole will be gathered to celebrate and support in recovering and those working towards that goal." Now, therefore, I, Kim Burgel, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do by here, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 as National Recovery Month, and call upon the people of Eureka, California, to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies to support this year's Recovery Month theme. Join the Voices for Recovery, invest in home, health, purpose, and community. And since she's not here, I'll just say that the picnic is actually this coming Saturday at Sequoia Park from noon to 4:00, all people are welcome, so come on by and have some food and enjoy some good company.
Thank you, Kim. And now, I have a couple of announcements to make, or at least a couple of things that I would like to say. First, I would like to remind everybody that September 22nd through 28th is going to be Good Neighbor Week in the city of Eureka, so we're asking people to get together with their neighbors, get to know each other. But this week, I am looking for people to write letters, kind of letters to the editor format, about thank yous to their neighbors, and submit them to me, so I can put them in a compilation and publish them. So, if you have a neighbor who at any time in your life has been there to help you find a lost pet, has a beautiful garden, who, you know, took care of you as a kid, if you would, if you would like to give him a shout-out right now, I think it would be a really lovely way to honor the people who mean so much to us and who we don't necessarily think about as often as maybe we should. And you can send them to my email address here, it's sseaman@ci.eureka.ca.gov. I also want to take this opportunity to say how much I personally am going to miss Rob Homland, who's, this is his last week in development services. I met Rob not long after he started his job, I've worked in economic development for 12 years, so I met him almost immediately after he began, and it was refreshing and inspiring to talk to him. You could tell that he was coming here to make a difference. And like I said, I've been in economic development for a while, my office used to be located in the industrial park in Arcata, and we would have businesses come to us, and they consistently wanted to find locations in Arcata. And I always wondered why, and so I did a lot of research, and I realized it was because in the 70s and 80s, Arcata made a plan, and they had a vision. And when Rob got here, I noticed that he seemed to have that same kind of plan and that same kind of vision. And today, some of those very businesses that were not interested in looking in Eureka are begging me to find them locations in Eureka. So, I just want to remind everybody that business and economic development is not just about having a business license counterperson, it's about going out, it's about making the effort, it takes vision, it takes planning, and it takes some mitigated risks. And that leads to how I have often described Rob forever, which is an entrepreneur with a bureaucrat's job. And I often wondered how long he would be able to maintain that, quite honestly. He recognized in the, and that we needed to be prepared for cannabis legalization, so we were ready to take advantage of it when the time came. He took on challenges head-on, some of them really difficult, like addressing longstanding contracts that weren't always serving Eureka to the highest level. And while that was difficult, I think, like the Chamber of Commerce has found out that they have really been unburdened, and they've been able to do amazing, wonderful things, and really recognize that they were freed from that burden. So, I have equally high hopes for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Rob didn't try to work around outdated zoning laws, he took on the whole zoning code as a project. He listened to his staff and encouraged them to pursue arts as an economic driver. He helped see that Eureka could be a place where people wanted to start their businesses. Then he worked to see that we have more housing units on schedule to be built this year than we've had in the last 12 years. So, as much as I hate to see him leave the city building, I'm glad to know he'll be staying in Eureka, an entrepreneur with an entrepreneur's job. I'm curious and excited to see where he can go without the grinding gears of government to slow him down. Good luck, Rob, and I won't even allow you to be a stranger, so, thank you. All right, I just wanted to make sure I got something out before I left, and I didn't cry. And now, it is time for public comment, period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes, and we have speaker cards up here, and do we have any?
Yes, our first speaker will be Thurmond, followed by James Graham, and then Cornelius Lowenstein.
Yes, thank you. This is a follow-up on a letter that you all received today, along with a copy of a county ordinance on target shooting. And I'm asking the council if you would take a look at that target shooting ordinance in my letter, and request to the Board of Supervisors that they revise the county ordinance. Let me just briefly indicate what this was about. It was approved about a year ago, and it was written by the sheriff and the NRA, and it sanctions, and I quote here, "Shooting on, into, and over any public place, where public place is defined as any area open to common or general use, participation, or enjoyment, including but not limited to such areas as beaches, parks, parking areas, roadways, trails, river bars, and other areas which are open and accessible to the public, and where shooting is not within a half a mile of a federal or state highway, and there's a 20-foot-high pile of dirt, or hill, or sand dune, someplace behind the target." I believe the ordinance has several problems, including it's in violation of a already-existing ordinance that prohibits discharge of firearms in county parks. It violates state law that would prohibit discharging a firearm on a county road. It appears to be in violation of the California Coastal Act that prohibits interference with public's right of maximum access, consistent with public safety, and a whole slew of other state laws that would forbid creating nuisances, disturbing the peace, obstruction, inciting fear, and intimidation, things like that. And I, I believe this is in the interest of the city to take a look at this, because people in Eureka are enjoying the whole outdoors in Humboldt County, and enjoy the tourism, enjoy all the things that the resources bring to the city. And this ordinance, I believe, is going to stifle business and stifle people from coming into this area. They know that they're going to be out trying to enjoy these areas and, and be confronted with what, what some of us have found is, is mass shootings. So, I would encourage you to take a look at this, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, you want me to raise that apple a little bit?
Good evening, Council, my name's James Graham. I'd like to say that I was at Leslie Castellano's thing at Jefferson School, and I thought that was pretty cool, because you could go and, and ask questions to a lot of people that were speaking there. were speaking there, unlike here, where I can't ask you anything. So I thought that was really cool to be able to go there and be able to actually ask questions, and I'd like to see more of that going on, maybe from some other council members, I don't know. And, I'm sorry, I'm still getting nervous sometimes up here. I already talked to her, and she said I can meet with her if I email her, and I would also like to ask the mayor if I could meet with her-
Absolutely.
-since I can't ask you any questions here. And my friend that's against, he's arguing with me, he wants the needles to be given out. Well, he got poked today, so I think he changed his mind. It was in Fortuna, he was walking down the road, and he seen a black thing, a little black container, and he picked it up, and there was like five in there, and then he put it in a little bag, and that's when he got poked by one in the bag. So I don't know if he's still for that or not, but I thought I'd throw that in there. There's just too many homeless people that don't want any help, that want to keep living the lifestyle they have, in Fortuna and Eureka. You can offer them help all day, they won't take it. Walking around like zombies, anybody that's been near Denny's any time in the evening has probably seen walking zombies. You can see them up and down all through Eureka, all the way up and down 101. I mean, somebody's got to start doing something about this, we can't let it continue. It's not just unpleasant to look at for tourism, but they need help as well. Like I say, a lot of them don't want help, so I don't know what you can do about that, and that's just some other stuff I'd like to talk about with you, instead of just getting up here and getting all mad and angry, that's what I want to do. I want to talk about it, see what you, what kind of power you have to do anything about it, and that's about it. Sounds pretty reasonable? Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council, dear fellow citizens, we are being told over and over again not to expect answers to basic and pressing questions that plague many of us daily. So we, the people, have to ask ourselves questions at an inconvenient truth we are facing. What do we want to be known for? What makes Eureka, Eureka? Do we want to continue on that black tar brick road we're on? We're not in Kansas anymore, but in the middle of an opioid epidemic, and comes with corresponding environmental and socioeconomic catastrophe in the form of needle litter, feces, garbage, and crime. Do we want to cater to those that disregard our well-being and safety, as well as their own health, or do we have it in us to think of our most vulnerable, our children, first, and address the health hazards that come with the homeless encampments, the feces, and the needles? Haven't we seen enough families leave and businesses close yet? Isn't it a fact that neglect, abuse, and trauma are most present in addicts' households and families? Little hint, ACE score, OD rate, and the correlation between those two. What are our local officials doing for the last few years to address and truly better the situation for all of us involved? Haven't they catered to the enabling forces, even promoted and colluded with them, all the way down to shady practices? I recently toured Old Town with someone, and we went into Cooper's Gulch, and we found 20 needles, and even way more concerning, twice as many caps. How can the city council expect volunteers to expose themselves to the potential of great bodily harm? Didn't the PD officer contract hepatitis say? The veil of feel-good semantics and the regurgitation of kumbaya, let love lead, and art will save us all, has gotten us here, and it's wearing thin. What are the consequences of the grand jury findings? What will be implemented and changed as a result of them? What happened to the Hatcher Oversight Committee? What has it accomplished? Does the city have a vision and the corresponding concepts to halt and reverse the downward spiral we have found ourselves in since recreational marijuana and the opioid crisis came along? Can those that caused the crisis lead us out of it? Harm none, because harm reduction kills us all and make Eureka safe again.
Mayor, we have Latonya Jacob.
Hi, my name is Latonya Jacob.
You can pull the mic away.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come before you today. I'm just a visitor here, I'm originally from New York State. I'm here visiting with my son, who wanted to live here in Eureka. I come before you today, this is National Payroll Week, and I asked if it's possible to meet with someone, one of the members here, during, within the next week, day or so, to participate on the Friday Farmer Evening Market. I'd like to promote the I-9 form, which is individuals, what, people who are working in the United States, it's the proof to prove that they can work, that they are legal residents of the United States. And I want to promote that form, I want to tell people about different payroll issues, and have games, and so I'd like to talk to someone to find out if that's possible. Thank you.
So you can get any of our information online, and email us, or give us a call on our messages, and we can get back to you individually? Is that our last on the official list? Okay, so you're ready to go.
Good, thank you. Janie Leger, also from Fortuna. Again, I want to remind you, as I did last time I was here, that at the sleeping sites, there were no needles found, people were using, people were helping each other. This substituting needles for homeless and homeless for needles needs to stop. They're two separate, different issues. Your homeless population is vast, educated, uneducated, long-term homeless, short-term homeless. It's a very complex issue, however, there is only one thing that they all need, and that is a place to live. And even those, even those that don't want help, that's because they just need a place to live. Thank you.
Do we have, okay, come on up.
Hi, so there's at least, my name's Cara Kelly, I've spoken before, and there's at least four things I wanted to bring up today. One is, there is a Stop the Bleed campaign, which I think that can be brought to the education in Eureka City schools, that kids can be taught, maybe at least in junior high and high school, how to stop bleeding, or doing CPR, and things like this as part of their physical education requirements, maybe? The other thing I wanted to mention was, I was walking along the jetty the other day, and there's a lot of decay and erosion and things like that, and I found some government grants that are available, I've posted them on Facebook, and I can email them to you guys, but I think it could potentially be a major flood issue that Eureka could be facing, I think this needs to be fixed, and we should reach out to the Army Corps of Engineers to fix it before it's, you know, a really bad problem. That was a really important one. And then, the other two things I wanted to talk about, I think it would be cool, this is kind of like, not as important, but I think it'd be cool to have some housing, maybe a percentage of housing available for people that own pets, I know, including in the homeless population, there's a lot of people that have dogs, and maybe that's why they can't get housing. I mean, all these people that rent are saying, "No dogs, no matter what," you know, and I just don't think that's appropriate, maybe no dogs if you can't take care of your dog, you know? I just don't think it's appropriate. And then, let's see, the fourth issue, I think there's too much already, I felt really uncomfortable when I was driving through Old Town, and there's just like, "pot shop, pot shop, pot shop," and I thought, "I'm going to be really sad if I have kids someday and I have to tell them about like marijuana, just because we decided to go walk on the boardwalk," you know? And so I think maybe if they could be more low-key, or, I mean, I really like the idea of having Old Town as a family-friendly region, not like all these pot shops everywhere, so thank you.
Do we have any other public comment?
Hello, my name's Kelly Pepperini, and I'm a selected representative of the DP Voice in the Eureka Street Community. I bring a message from the most chronic homeless people in Eureka. Okay, what is a person supposed to do that, that's why I can't do it all the time, I got to put it up here. What is the person supposed to do that wants to escape homelessness, but has no real chance of getting off the street, because there are no services or programs that are helpful, and that there are no housing available for them? And they don't have a drug problem, or a mental illness, to help them get off the streets. Really, what they need and want is the ability to fairly find work, by having a place to sleep, a way to be clean and presentable to an employer, and a place to store their belongings, and a way back and forth to work. But no, by no means should we be told to find a job, when we can't, when we are at such a disadvantage in the job market, that we can't even promise an employer that we can show up on time, clean, presentable, and as a potential new employee. Nobody would ever risk their own job to hire a person off the streets, and nobody should be put at such a disadvantage in the job market. It's the equivalent of a monkey signing up for Harvard. Some homeless have found a tool that can provide storage, a place to sleep, transportation, and a way not, and a way to look presentable to potential employers, is a car. Homeless people that have, are sober and have licenses, they need a place to park. They should have a safe place to park when not working, for sleeping, and to store their stuff. Eureka Street Community has all of people living out, a lot of people living out in their vehicles, they can leave their cars, they can lose their cars to abatement, and they don't get them back, and then they're back to the streets. So I've lost five cars in the last two years, my girlfriend's lost eight cars in the last two years, and it's all because we don't have a place to park it while we get the registration going, and stuff like that, or sometimes we don't have enough money, and we have to go one month more, pay for the one month for the car, the next month we're going to pay for the registration, but it's gone already, baiting is out, got it. So we need to save places to park our cars. Have a good day, guys.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Phyllis Barba. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but there were a few speakers before me talking about homeless issues. I've been privileged enough to work with AHA over the last few months. It's a program in Eureka called Affordable Houseless Homeless Association, and their program, I'm sorry, Affordable Homeless Housing Alternatives. And through that program, we're really striving to work with the city to find places that people can camp, park, and find different alternative places to live, to help people transition out of houselessness. So I know that the city has been working with this organization, so I know that there are solutions being sought after. And I'm also really proud to say that AHA had been funded a grant, that we have a mobile shower unit that we're being able to take to the neighboring cities, Eureka, Arcata, McKinleyville, Hoopa, and we're offering two times a week to help people living out on the street to have a shower. We're finding wellness services, people to donate haircuts, and massages, and pet care, so we are finding solutions in small steps, but I know AHA is working very hard, and over the last five years, they've made a lot of headway, and working towards finding a solution to this really problem that's not only locally, but nationally. Finding affordable housing for everybody is a difficult problem, and I'm really proud to say AHA is working really hard to finding solutions to that problem, and taking care of people's wellness as a whole. So for the person who talked to me earlier, I know that there are things out there that we are trying to find solutions for. So AHA, you can find them online, thank you so much.
Thank you. Please, no. Oh, you're good. Okay, any other comment? We all good? Alrighty, seeing none, I will bring it back, and we will move on to public hearings. We have our first public hearing, which is A1, Introduction of a Modification to Local Coastal Program Amendment for Cannabis Recommendation.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Rob Dumichal, I'm the permit manager for the Public Works Department, and we're talking about a modification of local coastal program amendments for cannabis. The big question you probably already asked yourself is, "Didn't we already do this?" And yes, we totally already did this. But the Coast Commission is requiring some additional tax modifications, we can only adopt them via ordinance, we can't just do it. So in regards to the modifications or the substantive, no, that's a repeat of things we already put in Article 30 that they want in Article 29. I kind of explain it as like belt and suspenders, so we're doing the same thing two times. And just as a reminder, so this has been in motion for about a year. We saw you back in August to talk about this, we had a public hearing with the Planning Commission, we came to council twice, we adopted it in the inland portion of the city, it's been in effect for quite some time. At the August 7th meeting of the California Coast Commission, they approved the amendment with these modifications, and so here we are today, doing the public hearing for the introduction to those modifications. Hopefully, next, or two weeks out, we'll be back for the adoption, as well as a resolution that we have to send to the Coast Commission, saying that we accept their modification. And then hopefully in October, the Coast Commission will accept the resolution, and the amendment will be final, and we can stop talking about this. So I have a suggested motion, I'm available for any questions you may have, and that's my whole presentation.
Does anybody have any questions? Alrighty, do we have, do we have anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment about this? Seeing none, I will bring it back. Oh. You could come up and make a public comment. We can't answer the question necessarily, but you can pose it.
Let me pose it this way, it would be valuable to know what changes were occurring, specifically like, this is what they suggested, this is what we are trying to change, maybe just take it section by section instead of reading the whole thing. Thank you.
Do you want me to go ahead and do that, Mayor?
No, we have another comment.
I encourage you to adopt this, and I've looked at the changes, and they're not very great. I'd like to suggest that in the future, your staff go to the Coastal Commission staff prior to taking it, you know, and get feedback, they may have gotten that feedback ahead of time and saved themselves some time. Thanks.
Do we have any other comments? Seeing none, I will bring it back. Do we have comments here? Councilman Arroyo?
I'd just like to ask that you elaborate on the belt and suspenders, so what was the item that-
So essentially, we changed everything in Article 30 for onsite consumption and signage, and now they're, basically their request is, we already have, it says, you know, cannabis retail, and so they asked us to put all the additional language in there that points you back to Article 30, so we already have the reference, but now we put additional words in there, so it says onsite, offsite, along with onsite retail. If that makes sense.
So the definitions for Article 30 didn't, they wanted them to be repeated in Article 29, essentially?
Kind of, basically, yeah. So the way it reads is, as I said before, you know, cannabis retail is allowed, you know, conditionally allowed in this area, and now it says cannabis retail onsite and offsite is available, you know, per Article 30.
Okay. So it's referencing a different article?
Correct.
Do we have any other questions, or any other comments, or motion? Okay, Councilman Bergell?
So I moved that the city council waive reading, read by title only, introduce bill number 970-dash CS, approving the local coastal program amendment, modifying the text in local coastal program amendment, modifying Eureka Municipal Code, Title 10, Chapter 5, pertaining to cannabis.
I'll second. All in favor?
Unanimous, yes, vote motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
And now we are moving on to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Unanimous yes, vote, motion carries.
And we do not have any ordinances or resolutions on this agenda, so we are gonna move on to report and action items where we are gonna ask Councilman Castellano to...
And just so the public knows, um, the, the next action item does involve the Ink People Center for the Arts, and I'm on the board and have a program through the Ink People, so I'm gonna remove myself from the room.
Thank you very much. So now we are opening up the Ink People City of Eureka Memorandum of Understanding. Hello?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Robin Prasker from the Community Services Department, and I'm going to introduce the Ink People Project before you tonight. It is in partnership with the city, which is why we have an MOU too tonight. Um, so we have a little video that kind of recaps this past year's partnership. And then after that, I will invite up Phyllis to speak and then Libby to come speak. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and click play. The retaining wall along Waterfront Drive was just asking for art. For a very long time, it sat there empty and often graffitied illegally. And it was really just a blank canvas waiting for the community to take advantage of it. And with Phyllis's vision, that has really happened.
Hi, I'm Phyllis Barba, and I am a resident of Eureka, currently owner, co-owner of Siren Song Tavern in Old Town. And I'm also a figurative painter. I was told that I would be the only artist painting, and I had then approached the board that was running the, the festival if I could invite other artists to participate and paint other murals alongside me.
Live art walls is something that's been probably gestating in the community for fifteen, twenty years. Uh, and it's finally come to fruition, which is really amazing to see.
Eureka Live Art Wall is a collaborative project with artists in the community. Artists contribute their creativity and their skill to color, to colorize Eureka. In exchange for their artistic endeavors, we're asking community members to donate services to give back to these artists who contribute to our community. It's based off of a project in Eureka, in Kingston, New York, called O Positive, where artists paint murals in exchange for medical services. I wanted to broaden that a little bit more to also offer other services to artists. Medical services as well as possibly job, training, automotive, home repair, anything that an artist may need. If there's someone in the community that's willing to donate their services in exchange for the artist's services, we're trying to marry those two together so artists can live more sustainable, healthy lives.
Maybe just giving artists money, which is always nice, but actually to offer them services such as medical services, dental services, uh, things that, you know, given the choice of, uh, you know, spending their own money on it if we just paid them, but they would actually now go and get some, you know, dental work done, which they wouldn't necessarily do otherwise.
I see the Eureka Live Art Walls project potentially even branching out into other cities, but in Eureka, I'd love to see all of these walls that have to be painted on all throughout the Waterfront Trail and then throughout the city of Eureka. I potentially would hope that we would have this plethora of services available at any given time, so when we have artists come up to paint, we can go ahead and just give them out to artists at the time that the paintings are being made. Um, kind of like a bank or a piggy bank of services that we're, we're able to dip into to give to artists. I see this being a long-term project.
So the Live Art Wall now is a Dreammaker project. We adopt it as part of our organization, so they have full nonprofit, uh, status. Uh, we help them with all the back office, bookkeeping, administration, um, and they get to go out and do the creative stuff.
I love that we had a public space to, um, express ourselves, a, a place that we can be free and, and do art that, um, the city can appreciate. It, it beautifies the community. It turns a boring, raw concrete wall into a gallery. And, um, you know, people can, can come by here and get inspired, get influenced. And, and that's how we keep art evolving and, and progressing in this community, in this world.
I think art brings that sense of art out into the world in a way that stimulates community, that enhances life, that, uh, really celebrates our commonalities, or perhaps creates conversations when people don't agree about the value of the artwork, 'cause we all have our own opinions, and that's okay.
I really appreciate being able to give back to my community and be of service in that way.
Hi, I'm Phyllis. Um, so I've been working with Robin and Donna over the last year or so now. It's been since last September that the project started. And we've, um, come to this point where I've, um, applied at the Ink People to become a nonprofit. So I'm working with Ink People now, um, in order to be able to fundraise to acquire these services and financial donations that we can then pass on to the artists. We've come up with an agreement through, um, with the city or with Donna and, um, Robin, we wrote up an MOU where the city stated their responsibilities, and the Ink People has stated their responsibilities, and I believe that you've been presented that. So, um, if there are any questions regarding that, um, if you, I would definitely be willing to answer those. And, um, we are now moving a little bit further into the project where we're taking one of those parking lots adjacent to the retaining wall that we've been painting, and we are establishing a youth version of that. So any participants under the age of sixteen and younger can, um, have a space to express themselves as well. And we chose that area because, um, the wall that we are painting on, the retaining wall, the, the, the surface is not, um, it's muddy and it's just not very predictable. Where in the parking lot, we know it's a safer spot for children to be able to, or youth to be able to paint on. The event is gonna be happening during the, um, Good Neighbor Week, and we're gonna be painting the, the Saturday, September 28th. Uh, the artists will be from 10 to about 6:00 PM or whenever it gets dark at that time. And we are inviting other organizations, um, I've asked, uh, there's going to be a skate park that's going to, um, uh, be participating as well. And then I'm trying to find other artists to do demos or to assist with the, the youth painting on the walls, so, yeah.
Thank you. Do we have questions, or do we wanna have Libby come up first? 'Cause I, did Libby wanna say something about this? I just didn't wanna get to questions and then leave you out, 'cause I know Robin said you wanted to say something.
Council, I'm, uh, very happy to be here to present the MOU for Live Art Walls with the Ink People. The first I remember this idea being promoted was by Dwayne Flatmo. Must've been 20 years ago. And it's taken this long to kind of ease it in and, uh, make it part of the art explosion that's happening in Eureka. I did wanna add a little dig. I noticed in the Arcata Union, or the Mad River Union, that the city of Arcata is, has allocated $150,000 to turn Arcata into an arts town. Just saying. Anyway, um, I'm really excited about the youth art wall that's gonna be happening. And, uh, one thing that Phyllis didn't mention is that she has gotten artists from San Francisco and other places.
Mexico.
Mexico, to come up on their own dime, use their own supplies, and make our community beautiful. Because they really appreciate that canvas that we are offering them.
So, does anybody have questions for Phyllis, or Libby, or Robin, or Councilman Arroyo?
So I, um, was rereading the MOU, um, and was a little unclear about whose responsibility it is to, I mean, it looks like the MOU says that the Ink People will coordinate the volunteer artists and project details, which to me means perhaps all of these services. But it wasn't exactly clear in the MOU, um, whose responsibility that, that is. So I just wanted to clarify. Is, is my understanding correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the matching of artists and the services they need and, um, kind of reaching out to them, and then also asking the community for those services will be something that your, um, your Dreammaker project will, um, will do? Okay.
Yeah, and the partnership with Community Services is to, uh, as stated, you know, keep the undergrowth down and, you know, all that. So it's, it's really a very positive partnership. We've really, uh, in the last year or so, enjoyed the partnership that the Ink People has had with Community Services. It's, you know, with the benches and the, the Eureka Art and Culture Festival, and it's everything happening along with the Strategic Arts Plan and the, uh, utility boxes, and now inspiring Manila to do the utility cement things. Uh, you know, it's, it's really amazing and it's growing and inspiring, and Eureka's a leader.
That's awesome. I, I just have one more follow-up question to that. Um, so because that wasn't abundantly clear to me, is there, I hate to look at the world in this way where I like think about liability, but I'm sure a city attorney would be happy that I'm thinking of it that way. Um, so I, when, when artists are, um, receiving a service, let's say they receive, um, some form of medical care through this project, um, is there gonna be some additional, um, just simple thing that they sign that's, uh, basically indicating that they're receiving the service from the Ink People and not directly from the city?
I'm sure we can do that. I still haven't gotten to that point, you know, where I've established all of that, like paperwork, but it's really gonna be where the community members donating their time. So it's, I think it's gonna be a very clear distinction where their artists are receiving these, um, services or whatever donations that they're receiving are gonna be directly from a community member. And so we're just trying to facilitate where people can meet. And so I will, I mean, I can state that in any agreement that we, um, any verbiage that needs to be put into the agreement, I'm sure we can do that, so, yeah.
Okay, I, yeah, I, I appreciate the spirit of it, and I think that that, you know, that'll work really well for the community you're working with. I just wanted to make sure that, that, that there was some way that that would be, be clear.
Yeah, so already the artists who work on the wall have a contract that they sign.
Okay.
You know, so we are thinking of these things.
Okay.
As we have to.
Yeah, I know. As we have to. Yeah, thank you for, thank you for that.
Do we have any other questions about this? Do we have any comments from the audience about this? All right, seeing none, I will bring it back for comments, or do we need a recommendation?
I guess that's, that's what I was gonna ask, is, um, are we just making a recommendation or are we doing something more?
A recommendation to adopt it?
Yeah.
The memorandum. Okay, well, really appreciate, thank you so much for your work and even thinking of this, 'cause that's a, it's a wonderful idea and good way to continue the leader, the leadership of Eureka in the art community. And, um, really appreciate thinking of the artists in this way as well, another way besides just money. So, um, I think it's a great idea. I think it looks like we're, we're all in agreement of that. So I would definitely recommend doing it, adopting, adopting it, but do we need to say?
I was gonna say, is that a motion?
So we are making a motion? Okay. I just wanted to make sure it was a motion that we needed to make. Yes, I will make a motion to adopt, to adopt a memorandum of understanding for the oversight of the Eureka Live Art Wall in the Cultural Arts District between the Ink People and the City of Eureka.
Thank you very much. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Just an additional comment. Um, I think this is a wonderful idea, and I really like the approach of, um, you know, looking for services and resources that people need in addition to, you know, um, direct financial resources. And I think we have a really generous community that's shown that they're really willing to support the arts here, so, um, I really am grateful for that. And, um, I'd be happy to help make connections. I know you have a ton of connections in the community, Phyllis, so I don't know if you need our help. But, you know, I, um, I think this is such a cool idea, I would love to help reach out. So please, um, think of us and helping to promote it and helping to reach, um, businesses that might have something to offer, um, to artists. I know a lot of people have asked me how they can get more involved if they're not particularly artistically inclined. Um, and so this is a great way. So, yeah, please think of us. And I'm so thrilled, um, that you've, um, continued with this, and the tenacity is pretty impressive, because I remember we talked about this like before 2014, before I first got elected, and the idea of having live art walls in Eureka. And I just, um, I think at the time, the community really associated, um, live art walls with the Palco Marsh, and they associated the Palco Marsh with things that weren't to, in their eyes, good. And I remember, um, so many of the structures in the Palco Marsh being, um, like the most, uh, this hidden gem in Eureka, um, and a place to experience like world-class art. Um, and people didn't have that view of it, so I think that, that people just weren't ready for that connection. And now we're at a point where people are really ready to see, um, street art in Eureka, and see street art that looks like street art, um, which I appreciate that you're bringing to the fore, 'cause I think a lot of people don't necessarily want, um, want something that reminds them of graffiti, um, near their business, um, because of that kind of lingering negative association. And so it's cool to see, um, street art that looks all different ways. Um, and so I really, I'm grateful. So, thank you.
All right, and we have another comment in the discussion area.
Just a quick comment. I just really wanna thank you for bringing this forward. I really, for me, I really appreciate that you've included our local youth. Um, this gives them an opportunity to be out there, to do what they do, and to get the credit for it, and to, you know, it's such a positive thing, because, you know, it's easy to go with, and it's not easy, but you can go with the spray can anywhere, but to have this kind of recognition and this positive kind of impact on some of our kids and some of our most vulnerable kids, I think is gonna be a really, is a, is a real gift to our community. And I do wanna let you know, I look at that, that wall every day when I drive my son to school, and I really appreciate it. It looks so much nicer. And I always like looking at what's new, if there's anything new, or what the, the changes are, so thank you so much. Appreciate your dream.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. We've had some discussion. We all ready to vote?
Unanimous yes, vote, motion carries.
Excellent. We're looking forward to seeing all the cool stuff that's done on September 28th. Thank you so much.
Can I send, um, Councilmember Castellano back in?
Yes, please do.
Let me redo that vote, because it showed up weird on my, so let me call it out. It is four yes votes. Councilmember Castellano absent. Thank you.
Thanks, Natalie. All right. Thank you for coming back. And now we will be hearing a city manager's report and, uh, report on the 2018 crime statistics.
Yes, Chief Watson will present, uh, 2018 crime statistics.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, this is, this last year, 2018, was the first year that we had a, a full year's worth of data on our new records management system and a computer-aided dispatch system with Sun Ridge's RIMS system, uh, as well as the FBI several months ago. Uh, I believe it was just before summer, they released their, uh, 2018 Uniform Crime Report Statistics. Uh, the UCR statistics come from the Department of Justice. And so I just wanted to hit a few highlights, this won't take too long, as well as give you a little bit of information about, uh, where the Eureka Police Department is with our activities levels for this, this past year. Uh, so if you look at the year 2018, our officers responded to over 62,000 incidences in total. And if you break that down, over 42,000 of those were dispatch calls for service. That means someone called in, they needed police assistance for some reason. And then over 20,000 self-initiated, uh, actions. That's where we saw something suspicious and, uh, went out and dealt with it proactively. That's where we saw something suspicious and went out and dealt with it proactively. And so, that's an average of about 171 incidences per day. When you look at those numbers, it's important to realize that that does not include fire and EMS calls for service. So, dispatch also dispatches for those, our communications center does. If you look at those numbers, we're talking over, I think it's over 71,000 calls for service. And they also have to answer the phones up there. And so, they took over 100,000 calls on the business line, our dispatchers did, in 2018.
Can you just clarify, 100,000 on the business line or on both lines, including the business line?
The way it was shared to me by our communications manager was the business line calling in with dispatchers actually answering the phone. So, those don't all result in a call for service, but that also gives you a little picture of how incredibly busy we are. And they've been down several dispatchers over the past year and as many as five out of 10. And so, they've really been hustling out there. And then, as you can see, our officers are also very busy. Dispatch also handles about 17 Priority One calls for service a day. Those are life or death calls. Someone's being stabbed, something like that. And they received over 29,911 calls in 2018. I thought this was pretty interesting. So, we took, our officers took over 8,800 reports in 2018. That means we actually drew a case number, wrote a crime or incident report that was entered into the record management system. That's different than something that's just reported to the department and is documented in our computer-aided dispatch system. Those numbers don't align because we don't always take written reports. And when we talk about some of the crime statistics under UCR, it's important to realize that those are based at any agency in this country on the actual reports that officers take. So, those numbers that I gave you, that 8,800, not, let's say someone calls in, their car got broken into, their wallet got stolen, they call and report it to us, but they don't request an actual case because they don't think we really need to do that. They just need a number for their insurance company. That won't be reflected in the property crime statistics, only if the officer takes a case. So, if you break that down, about 47% of those cases were for misdemeanors, 24% for felony, and then 24% for other infractions and whatnot. We issued over 2,600 citations. Those are not just for Eureka Municipal Codes, but also numerous traffic infractions and other crimes. And then, here's the statistic I really want to point out. In 2018, our officers booked over 3,400 suspects into the county jail, 3,475. That is more than double the jail bookings of any other agency in the county and even more than the next two closest agencies combined, the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office around 1,500, R-KD-PD around 1,400. So, from an enforcement standpoint, when it comes to crimes in our community, our officers are very busy. So, we're talking about the FBI Part One crimes. That's basically, when they say Part One crimes, we're referring to those crimes that are tracked under the UCR. And so, the Department of Justice compiles those reports as officers report in across the country. So, you can see that the majority of crimes occurring in Eureka that were reported and fall under the UCR categories, 88% of those were property crimes with 12% of those being violent crimes. And you can see it's broken down there. I don't have the exact numbers, but larceny is the single most commonly reported crime. A violent crime aggravated assault was the most common.
Can I ask a quick question? What's the difference between burglary and larceny?
You know, I was hoping you weren't going to ask me that because I would have to, I have to go back to the DOJ's definition. But burglary would be, at least in the state of California, and I want to be careful to make sure this is universal elsewhere, that someone breaks into your home, someone breaks into your business, if someone breaks into your car and it's locked, those are considered burglaries here. Larceny is more of a general term for theft crimes. So, that could be, you know, maybe someone steals something out of the back of your truck, maybe shoplifting, things like that. So, it's kind of the catch-all, I believe, under the UCR. Let's see. So, property crime, the overall rates of property crimes in Eureka has remained pretty steady over the last few years. We did see one notable change. This is good news. Residential burglaries have decreased. The monthly average between 2013 and 2015 was, I believe, 21 a month. And that has been reduced to 16 a month, looking from 2016 to 2018. And last year, we had the lowest average in six years with just 14. I believe that's around 30, about a third drop there. And it's important to note, we talked again, that for UCR purposes, an officer has to take an actual crime report for it to be tracked. Again, if someone breaks into your car, very often, those aren't reported to the police or reports not generated. If someone breaks into your home, it's almost 100%, unless maybe you had an illegal operation taking place. You're going to report that. So, those numbers are much more accurate. We also had an average of 17 vehicles stolen per month in 2018 and we recover nearly all of those. And in fact, this is both a plus and a minus. It speaks to vehicle theft, not just in the city of Eureka, but in Humboldt County. You know, we have higher rates, but our officers are also recovering them at very high rates. There's something known as the 10-851 PIN. That's an award through CHP and I believe it's AAA where if you recover, I think it's 12 stolen vehicles in a year with three in custody, for instance, is one path, you earn a PIN. And it's very unusual for someone to typically, looking statewide, earn multiple PINs. We have several officers working on their master PINs right now. They've only been here a few years. That's, I believe, five of those PINs. So, we are good at finding cars for what it's worth. I wish they were harder to find, quite frankly. But, you know, a lot of vehicle theft is preventable when it comes down to it. In fact, I would say most of vehicle theft is preventable. People are, you know, leaving their cars with their keys inside or there's other risk factors. When you come into the cold months, we always get a few that are stolen because it's frosty outside, someone leaves their car running to warm it up with the door unlocked and the key inside while they run inside to get their coffee. You're just, hate to say it, but you're asking to have your car stolen. All right. Violent crime, that has trended up overall over the past several years. Locally, though, there was a reduction in violent crime in Eureka in 2018. And again, violent crime is something much more likely to be reported than many property crimes, depending on what kind of violent crime. We know sometimes rape is under-reported for a number of different reasons and sometimes simple assaults and batteries. But robberies, stabbings, shootings, the more serious crimes are overall reported pretty consistently. And so, we did see a drop. If you look at the trend line again since 2013, it's going up. We had a couple of high years in 2016, 2017, and we started downhill in 2018. So, that's good news. I would want to point out that we had a string of violent armed robberies that occurred over a year and a half or so period, I think ending in 2017. Some of those were serial bank robbers. In fact, we had suspects working in tandem, which was kind of unusual. We had a motel robbed at gunpoint once. Taco Bell, I think, got robbed, which is unusual. And gas stations and mini-marts. The detective bureau has almost 100% clearance rate on those. And in fact, we ended up with several very, actually over a dozen, very lengthy prison sentences for suspects that we were able to put successful cases together against. And the message being, Eureka is not a good city for you to come commit armed robberies with the team we have in place right now. So, bad that we're having the robberies, our clearance rates are very good for those type of robberies and that's good. If you look at 2019, year-to-date, this is actually January, I believe, through July. Look at where we're tracking compared to the first slide that I showed you. 41,240 total incidences with 26,000 of those being those dispatch calls for service where someone calls and requests assistance and over 15,000 self-initiated calls. And so, that changed from an average of about 171 a day that our officers handled to 184 incidences per day. This is somewhat conjecture, but we believe some of this increase, or probably most of this increase, is due to our new CSAT team, the Community Safety Enhancement Team, which went live in July 1st of 2018, as well as we are running the safety corridor overtime grant operations, so stopping speeders in the corridor. So, that may account for some of that extra self-initiated activity. So, self-initiated incidences are up about 30% in comparison to the same timeframe in 2018. You've already seen that. Just want to give shout-out, we have a couple more videos posted to our YouTube page and Facebook. If you guys want to check those out, they're there. I can play this one for you if you want, or if we want to do real well on our time, we can, I'll take questions.
I've already watched it, but we can certainly watch it again. I just want you to know I already watched it.
Thank you.
Please play it.
You might have to hit the... Let's see, I'll go back and forth again, see if it autoplays. This one's connected to the internet.
My name's Joseph Cowge and I've been in law enforcement for about six years and two years of that are with the Eureka Police Department. Being a part of an agency or being, you know, in the brotherhood of law enforcement, it's kind of, it's almost surreal because it comes with high standards. A lot is expected of you. You have to be professional, you have to remain calm. I mean, you could be in the highest stress situation, but you have to kind of be the calming force, no matter where you are. And it's pretty amazing to be a part of something like that because it's not easy and it's really challenging, but it's also the most rewarding thing I've ever done. So, that guy I was just talking to, and I've arrested him multiple times and gotten parole violations on him. And I told him he looked good. He looked clean and sober. He looked healthy. And he told me that he's been out for a couple of months and he hasn't used and he's actually staying at the mission and he's doing the program there. I told, you know, I told him, "Good job," and shook his hand. Just because someone's on parole doesn't mean they're a bad person. They just have their struggles and their issues that they need to, you know, conquer and a lot of them have a hard time with that. To see someone actually taking the steps forward to overcome that is actually something that is good to see. And that's, you know, kind of what police officers do is we're here, we want to affect change in a positive way.
So, on this topic of humanizing the badge, and we call the video series EPD in the community, you may have read at least a recent opinion piece in the Time Standard that I debated whether I was going to respond to and ultimately decided that I didn't think it was necessary because our actions speak for themselves. And everyone's entitled to their opinions, but that opinion piece missed the point of what this is, which is, we recognize, not just the Eureka Police Department, but increasingly the institution of policing, that our relationships and our partnerships with the community are absolutely vital and the public's trust is genuinely our lifeblood and that there can't be a them versus us mentality. And even with all the hits that we've taken the last few years with some of the national movements and the negative national publicity, we can't afford to circle the wagons and, you know, and create that wall. We are members of the community. We're fathers, brothers, sisters, mothers and friends. We're part of this community, invested in the community. We're fellow human beings. We're flawed, you know, and we're magnificent sometimes, just like each of you. And we care about our community and I just want our community to see our officers as people and get to know them a little bit better, understand their heart, why they got into the profession, to protect and serve others and to help continue to build those bridges and to move forward together, not be mired into the past. So, that's what I expect you to see from the Eureka Police Department and Humboldt Bay Fire, you know, which I think you are. And, you know, it's not just a destination. We're never going to be 100% there. We make mistakes. It's the journey, but we're invested in that journey. So, I will entertain any questions that you have at this time.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? I think, yeah, I don't think we could just take comments right now, too.
I just, I was curious where that information could be found or if you have it somewhere posted?
So, I will have it posted tomorrow on EPD's transparency portal. There's a link on EPD's webpage directly to that. There's also another document. If you go down a few there, it's called On Crime Rate Reporting, something I wrote some months ago, or maybe it was about a year ago, that just talks a little bit more about how these kind of crime stats are compiled. And it's open and it's frank. For example, we lost, for a number of reasons, our entire police service officer force a few years ago. Well, what they did all day long, in addition to a lot of the other busy work that would tie up our officers, they took these kind of reports. No suspect, low-level crime reports, traffic collision reports. When they went away, some of the statistics dropped. Now, it may not have been just because of them, but that was absolutely a causal factor. I think we need to be transparent about that. Because again, there's a lot of things that go into crime statistics that can impact them. That's why you have to be careful when you're interpreting that kind of data. Now, we have two back. They are taking more of these reports. I actually expected to see maybe some numbers creep up, but again, there's so many things that go into crime in a community that it can be difficult sometimes to point to any one thing. And so, you've got to kind of look at the whole picture. And then, also the UCR stats, you can go to Google them, they're online, I think, at the Department of Justice website. And if you need more, you want us to do it for us, just get ahold of me and I'll have my crime analyst give you whatever you want.
Great, thank you. And I was also curious, do you think that, or how do you think Neighborhood Watch and, you know, in crime by, what is it called? Environmental design? What's the whole?
SEPTED.
Yeah. So, how do you think those things have helped? Or if they've helped in some of these statistics? Because those, you, it went from, it's really from 2016 where the changes have been made. And I know in that time really is when Neighborhood Watch came in and then, of course, SEPTED has started to become some education around that and just curious.
So, we don't have any realistic way to directly correlate the positive results of those programs to crime statistics, common sense, I think, and maybe some analytical evidence and some observations would indicate that those are both incremental positive steps in the right direction. Certainly can't hurt and more likely than not are helping. The exact ratio, I just don't know, but they work. And I think the easiest way to tell how successful they are is not necessarily these UCR stats, but the individual stories in neighborhoods, where there's success stories and where we were going to 100 calls for service and now we're going to a handful or none. That will tell you it worked in that area. And you look at the Jefferson Project, for instance, that combines all of this, Neighborhood Watch, SEPTED, community coming together, literally transformed a neighborhood. It's a beacon of light there when it used to be something very different.
Kim first and then, because you're ready.
Well, thank you for presenting. And, you know, I just want to just put a shout-out for, a shout-out, but I just want to say how much I appreciate our CSAT team and all the work that they're doing as well as you. And, you know what, as a sidebar, you know, these guys are out there working all the time, but they also, they're very available. And for instance, I had somebody in my neighborhood just the other night who was laying in the street with no shoes on and talked to this person, got ahold of a CSAT worker who knew this person and was able to, you know, eventually get them connected. So, I've got the information and got that dialed in. And I'll tell you, you know, in 2014, that was a lot harder to do. And so, I think that, that you really, this is not just a bunch of talk. You know, this is not just a bunch of frilly, fluffy, "Oh, we're so awesome." This is work that's happening every single day and people are getting better. You know, another person, just another success, there's just two more, I promise. I could give you a whole list, but I'm going to give you two more. Guy arrested for drunken public, three years running, highest, highest arrest record, 33 days clean. 33 days clean because of the department and the willingness to connect with this person and support them into waterfront. Amazing stuff is happening with these people and it is such a gift for our community. And even tonight, I got a call from somebody who was looking for a way to get into recovery, an officer who was trying to help somebody get into recovery. And what a gift that is because that's not normal policing. That's not what I think of policing as. I just, I really want to let you know how much I appreciate the effort that you make to make our community a better place, to be accessible and to not, especially, you know, the guys that I've worked with with CSAT, there's not, it's not a judgment. You know, it's like you're a human being, I'm a hu- there's not, it's not a judgment, you know, it's like, you're a human being, I'm a human being, what's next, what's next? And so, I just, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, and I certainly am very proud of them. When we formed the unit, we had some broad ideas of what goals we wanted to accomplish with it, and we tried to set the unit up so they had a lot of flexibility and time and space to actually problem solve, and not just play whack-a-mole or ping-pong policing, like I like to call it, where you're just bouncing around reactionary, putting out fires as they occur, but actually look at more long-term solutions, as well as being very visible and present. And so we have learned that it definitely takes, you know, some focus, a plan, a strategy, someone to lead that, that's present and invested, not just the chief, because I've pulled a lot of different ways. So we have a sergeant assigned to that unit, Sergeant LaFrance, and a captain over that, and they're doing a great job. And then the officers and rangers that are actually out there, working with these individuals, are doing a tremendous job. We ask them to do a very, very difficult job, and it doesn't seem to matter what they do. "Well, it's too much enforcement, it's too much outreach, it's too much this," and they persevere. It's not always perfect, but I think we're moving in the right direction. And I think the key, when you talk about the homeless issue, the mental illness issue, and those with substance use disorders, there's got to be that balance between enforcement. There is no question there is a need for enforcement or accountability, like I like to call it. You have to, to maintain a safe and livable community, and, you know, not actually drain resources in the wrong direction. At the same time, enforcement can't be the first and only tool that we reach for on our belts. It's got to be balanced with outreach and enforcement. And so we're trying to increasingly do that while still maintaining order. I mean, we are law enforcement officers, it's what we do. But we're increasingly policing the gaps and learning to fill those gaps with other resources, make those relationships in the community. And so I'm excited to see where we can collaboratively continue to go forward with our community partners. And not just Eureka Police Department, I mean, community services, you know, other departments, you know, the code enforcement, all of them are so heavily involved and invested in this, and there's some great things happening despite our challenges. A lot of work remains to be done, but I think we're making some progress.
Councilor O'Neal?
I just had a comment, and then one question, but I'll do the comment first. So, I was just speaking with a couple of my former students from HSU at the Friday Night Market a couple weeks ago. And they said, they stopped me to tell me that they were really, that they had noticed that the Eureka Friday Night Market and the police presence there feels really friendly to them, and actually helps them feel good about coming to the Friday Night Market. And one in particular said that they did not previously have a very good perception of the police in general, and that interacting with the officers there at the market, and frankly, the fact that one of them was wearing shorts made it feel less threatening. They actually told me, like, "Oh, the Arcata police, when they're at festivals and stuff on the plaza, you know, because they're on bikes, or they're wearing polo shirts or something, it sometimes feels a little bit less threatening." And so I just thought I'd pass that along, yeah, the polo shirt, that, you know, the kind of, a little bit more approachable, and just walking around chatting with people, kind of a friendly smile on their face kind of thing, really made them feel like those folks were there to look out for them and help them feel safe, instead of there to catch them doing something bad. So, that was really cool to hear that, you know, and they were like, "We're going to tell our friends that the Friday Night Market is cool." And frankly, I think we really need that as a city. We need students from HSU and CR to feel welcome, coming and hanging out in Eureka, and frequenting our events. And so I just wanted to pass that on, because I thought it was really neat that they pulled me aside to tell me that.
Thank you. I definitely agree that making those connections are key.
Yeah. And then I have one question, which is about how traffic enforcement factors into this, because I know that some of us get comments from time to time that they, you know, folks in the community wish we would do more traffic enforcement. So could you speak to that a little?
Sure. So right now, we're running two grants. It's difficult for us to give the level of attention on traffic enforcement that it really needs in the city of Eureka with our current staffing situation, and I can talk more about that, maybe another council meeting. But we are running two grants. We have a $60,000 Office of Traffic Safety grant, that's for primary collision factors, DUI enforcement, distracted driving, speeding, things like that. Wherever in the city we're having our biggest problems, we try to, we try to, you know, gather that information, and then post the overtime for those areas, and then, of course, the traffic safety corridor, which, again, despite what I keep hearing, some people say in social media, doesn't cost the city anything. These are officers on their days off that would not otherwise be at work, that are choosing to come in, fully funded through our relationship with HCOG, covers mileage on the vehicle, and their overtime rates. And they're just killing it. I mean, that's not a good word to use in the safety corridor, but they really are doing a great job out there. So, that's just one component. We do encourage our officers to try to run traffic enforcement when they can. It's just challenging, especially during the daytime, in early swing shift, when we're just going call to call. You know, officers go to as many as 30 calls in a 10-hour shift, and they have to have time to get their cars loaded out, time to offload, write reports, and all of that in between. If you go to the jail, you could be looking at an hour. What I do plan to do is, when we can stay fully, or nearly fully staffed, bring back two traffic officer positions. And so we'll replace those, that's kind of a longer-term strategy. The good news is, as we stand today on paper, we're fully staffed and maybe even technically overhired by a couple positions, because we have six, five or six in the academy. I do have three applying to leave elsewhere. I anticipate at least two of those will eventually leave, and, you know, so that will balance out, fully staffed, if I don't lose any others. The academy graduates, it'll take them until the end of December to graduate, and I hear they're doing very well in the academy, standing out very distinctively, kind of almost leaders in the academy. But then they're going to have about four months of field training after that, so you're probably talking May, beginning of May, before they hit the streets in their solo status. But really great group. Two of them are former police explorers, so they've come home. A couple were former correctional officers that wanted to work here. And I think one is retired Coast Guard. So, we're excited. And with dispatch as well, we now have four of our five vacant positions filled. They all passed their post exam. I heard three of them that needed to take it last week. And we have one more in backgrounds, actually two in backgrounds, but we only hire one. So I hope to be fully staffed shortly on that. And I appreciate the support from the city manager and Will. I mean, Human Resources has to do so much work with all this hiring and turnover that we have. And I also appreciate council support. You guys have proved a number of things that have been very important to get us where we're at today with our staffing. So that can change, that's the reality of the game, but I'm feeling more hopeful than I have in several years.
Do we have any other comments? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Always interesting to hear what you have to present.
Oh, I forgot to throw out one other thing I didn't want to forget. CSAT gets a lot of attention right now, and very rightfully so. They're at the tip of the spear in many ways with some of the city's most pressing problems. Quietly behind the scenes, the Problem Oriented Policing Unit has really been heavily involved in a lot of the major abatement issues that we've had, other problems that abandoned vehicles that are getting towed. Maybe I should share some of what they've been getting done as well sometime soon, but I just got a report today, it's also pretty awesome.
Thank you, and thank you for pointing that out, yeah.
Take care.
All right. So that was part of our city manager report. Do you have anything else?
I do have another report, Mayor. And, but contrary to what you said earlier, you did steal my thunder on Rob Homeland for his last meeting. And since Rob's not even here, it probably doesn't matter, but I definitely don't have any music to play at the end of my comments, and probably not going to sing. So-
I didn't sing.
No, but at least you had the music lined up. So, I also wanted to just say kind of a thank you to Rob and his department for all that's been accomplished this past five years. I mean, the list is rather endless. When I meet with Rob on our one-on-one meetings, he always has this long list of projects he's working on, and I always think, we've got way too many projects, and I don't want to take any of those off the list. I mean, they're all important, but, you know, they all take a lot of time. Everything from, you know, really kind of getting through the general plan, and redoing the zoning ordinance, and coming up with the comprehensive cannabis regulations, and then amending those as we find what's working, what isn't working. The Strategic Arts Plan, just a number of initiatives that have come through the department. And kind of what I most appreciate is that Rob has been a transformational leader. He was certainly the right person at the right time to lead the department, and to bring forward really all those projects. His work ethic and his dedication to the city was really off the charts. And I think as a leader, he created a great team, and that team will continue to do great things. So, we'll just say thank you to Rob, and if he's still here, I would have had him come up to see if he had any final comments to give to the city. But since he's going to remain here in the community and in consulting, somehow I think he will find his way back to a council meeting at some point, so, anyway.
Thank you very much. And the music was actually supposed to be at the end of the meeting, but Rob's not here, so Pam. Very nice job choosing that time. All right, so we are going to do council member reports, and this time we will start down on this side with Councilor Bagel.
Well, thank you. So, I don't have much to report, I just want to let folks know that on September 15th, we're going to be doing a cleanup at Ross Park, partnering with the community's, geez, Parks and Rec. Help me out here.
Community Services.
That's who they are, absolutely. It's only been changed for three years. So we're going to be doing woodchips, bench painting, and trash pickup. It's going to be from 10:00 to 11:30. Hopeful to go around the neighborhood and get some flyers out to friends in the neighborhood, so we can really get this going. I'm going to be out of town for Good Neighbor Week, so this is where my, this is what it's going to be. And then, just another sidebar is that I did go to International Overdose Awareness Day on Saturday, and that was really, as it always is, very moving. The police chief from Arcata spoke, which was really quite interesting. And there were a lot of different speakers talking about the disease of addiction, and what the impacts and the effects of are on people around us. And, you know, I've been for the last three years, and so I just thought I would just share a little reason as to why I go. And I haven't shared this in a long time, and probably not at this meeting, but, you know, when I was out in the marsh, I spent a lot of time out in Palco Marsh, and I shared this at the Awareness Day one day. You know, you never know who you're going to run into. And I was out there one day after a service festival or a service fair, I was showing somebody around, big day, and I was walking without my glasses, couldn't see, and there was this lump in the parking lot. Well, as I got closer, I realized that that lump was a person, that lump was a human being, and that person was blue and barely breathing. And so the person that I was with was able to, we called 911, got the CPR, anyway, he ended up dying of alcohol poisoning. And so, I really want us to be mindful that, you know, we've got, I think a lot of us have this idea that it couldn't happen to us, it couldn't happen to anybody around us, never, never, never. And the truth of the matter is, is that I didn't even know this guy, but he's impacted my life for the last four years, and I'll never forget him. And I think that being aware, and just being open to the idea that people can heal, and that people aren't garbage because of their addiction, is super important. So, that's all.
Thank you, Councilor, oh, we're just gonna-
Nothing this time.
Okay, Councilor O'Neal.
I just have really one thing to report that's not related to the other workouts that I wear. It's been a very busy couple of weeks. But I did attend the Central Labor Council's picnic, their Labor Day Union picnic, and it was a nice reminder of just how involved the unions in our community are. And it was great to sit with people and talk to them about their concerns in Eureka, and to have a chance to speak to those assembled, and Mayor Seaman also made some great remarks. And I did not previously know about this, you know, we're all doing so many different things, and we all kind of have our interests and our programs that we're really volunteering for, or moving forward. And I didn't know about her toys, Tools for Tots program, which is really aimed at encouraging kids to play with, playthings that are related to the trades, and inspire interest in the trades. So, they have construction benches, and attire, and all kinds of things like that, really front and center for kids to play with, and that's sort of like a long-range view. And I think it's really cool, because I'm in the middle of, I'm at the start, really, of a project to remodel an ADU at my house for my mom, so she can live in my backyard, and age in place, and I can take care of her as she gets older. And I thought about, a lot about how we're trying to create housing, and how that'll be housing for my mom, and someday it'll be housing for someone else. But it's really hard to find contractors who are available in this community. And I had no idea, because I hadn't embarked on building projects before this. I had just done, like, minor little things. But to find somebody who's available and willing to go through the process of a bigger remodel, that's going to make a place livable for my own mom, is incredibly hard. So I just wanted to say thank you to Susan for making sure to kind of think about this and plant the seed for the next generation, that those are respectable, well-paying jobs, and they're needed in our community. So, I was really moved by that, and I thought it was a really cool idea, and a great way to think about housing, and housing, you know, creation in the longer term, in a way that we don't normally think about it. So, that's all I have for now.
Councilman Messner?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that was great. It's very important. Thank you. So, I had just a couple things. There was a bill that I had brought forward before, asking people to contact Senator McGuire regarding Bill AB 516, 516, for vehicle, vehicles that actually our abatement teams have been working on. And thankfully, I just want to say thank you to the community for everyone who did that, because it did die in the Senate, which was very good. So at least for this round, that bill has effectively been killed and held up with, at the Senate Appropriations Committee, so thank you for that. It's a really important thing that we do in our community, and I appreciate so much that attempt to keep the light off our streets, but also to prevent the storm, you know, the things that prevent stormwater pollution runoff, and limiting public work services, and creating scarce parking. I mean, these are all things that if we were not able to remove these vehicles, we would be facing, so appreciate that. And then also, continuing just to be meeting with the county regarding our work in addressing homelessness, housing, and mental health issues that we face in our community, and that they're all such important pieces of what we do, and important issues that we're facing in our community. And so, continuing to be in those meetings and discussing things that we can do together in partnership, which is important. Also, I was asked to attend one of the school's open houses in my ward, which is Alice Bernie, and it was great to see what they're doing there, and really wanted to state, I wasn't at all the open houses, I don't have young children anymore. But I really appreciated being there and seeing the things that they have done to really work to improve education and the school environment at that school, and then I've been at a number of other schools and experiencing that, too. So I appreciate the hard work of the school district in doing that, which I think is really important. And just a couple things to be aware of, that Saturday, this Saturday, there's the Cruising Eureka and Arts Alive. So just reminding people about that, to come on out, and then Clark Historical Museum is hosting a tri-tip barbecue for that also. Thursday, the 12th, is when you were speaking about ways to combat, where, when Councilmember Bagel was speaking about ways that we can combat issues of addiction, adult teen, and teen challenge. They have a banquet at Socoria Conference Center to continue to raise funds for that. That's at 6:00 PM on Thursday, the 12th. Thursday, the 19th, is the NAMI, National Alliance of Mental Illness, spaghetti fundraiser at the Elks Lodge, which is also happening from 5:30 to 6:30, and another really important thing. So, please be aware of these things. Also, the cancer awareness for the Hope Ball. The Hope Ball is happening at the Elks Lodge on September 21st at 5:00 PM. And then also, South Eureka Neighborhood Alliance is having a picnic at Highland Parks on, Park at September, on September 28th at 11:00 AM. So these are all things that, if you are interested in any of these, to be aware of, and come participate in those. And also, thank you for pointing that out.
I forgot.
This is the hydrochromic paint murals that- This is the hydrochromic paint murals that were brought to the council and the city, and I know that Councilmember Bagel has been working with Swan on that, but we were talking about the fact that Henderson Center would be a great first place to begin that, those projects. And so, I know that's your ward, Councilmember Arroyo, and I know there's also some meetings. So, these are some of the things that we're looking forward to doing in our community that when, that there would be paint that would be only seen when it rains, which it does do here in Eureka. So, one of the advantages of doing something like this would be that it would actually help people to actually be outside and enjoy, enjoy the community even in the rain, because umbrellas were made for a reason. And I think that it would be great to see people out and not being so, you know, not worried about the rain, but they might be interested in the art that's happening around the community and shows up. It would be fun to see that done, so excited about that. And thanks to Jeannie Breslin, who brought that to our attention.
May I make one more comment about that, Madam Mayor?
Sure.
Okay, really quickly. So, this is, yeah, paint that's visible when it rains, and I just wanted to comment that the picture here appears to show a roadway that people are driving on, and I know that our Public Works Department just recently shared with us that it's not okay to paint roadways, possibly with, you know, alternative crosswalk designs or maybe really fun patterns that are really distracting to drivers. So, I just wanted to note that this picture is just showing a before and after of the paint in use and not necessarily what we're proposing. But I know that council members, Messner and Bagel, have also been chatting about this, so we're not exactly sure who's going to go move this forward because only two of us can meet about city issues outside of, outside of here. So, we're respecting the Brown Act, and we're figuring it out, and it's a really cool idea that was talked about with the Strategic Arts Plan and the update to that. So, there's some interest in Henderson Center, but it remains to be seen how those will move forward. But I forgot that I was supposed to mention in my comments, so thank you for doing it.
Councilwoman Castellano.
Let's see. Well, there's always lots to do in Eureka. I've been attending the Eureka Main Street Board Meetings, and I wanted to let everyone know that coming up, September 12th through 20th, is Fashion Week. And so, there is going to be a slew of events downtown and old town, kind of kicking off on Thursday, and there's going to be a fashion show on Friday, and then kind of specials and participating businesses throughout the week. And just to not, you know, this is a partnership between Eureka Main Street, and I know Amanda's been working really hard on it, and also Sue from Bell Star Clothing has really stepped up to help bring this event for everyone. Let's see, I attended the RIDEC Board Meeting, and we went out to Blue Lake and had a really interesting tour of the new microgrid out there. And basically, a microgrid is a self-contained power system that combines batteries and solar panels, primarily in this instance. There's other versions out there. And the interesting thing about this is that it does tie into the larger grid, but that were there to be an emergency or something like that, it could be a self-contained energy system that can be used to, you know, help enter, provide energy for emergency needs. So, this is something I'm interested in looking at. You know, that particular project was grant-funded, and so, I'm definitely interested to look at how something like that could happen in Eureka, you know, and, you know, to see what kind of funding there is out there for it, for us both to be more sustainable with our energy needs. And also, you know, we, I think we really, you know, everyone needs to, you know, have a disaster plan in mind. So, I would like for staff to look into that if other council members are interested.
I love what they're doing out at Blue Lake Rancheria, just to even learn about it.
Yeah, it's quite impressive. And there have, you know, even really wonderful things on the horizon, you know, education center about traditional methodologies. There's a lot of great things that they're really working on as a community out there. Let's see, the other thing, I attended the Eureka City Schools Two by Two Meeting. Want to say, it's really great news, high school enrollment in Eureka is up. The Cooper Gulch After School Program is really working well for students, and there's now a bus service that takes students right there. So, it's a really nice partnership between community services and public schools. Let's see, also, I, as was mentioned earlier, I hosted a town hall meeting, and it was a really great experience, you know, just to talk with people on a more casual basis. And also, just a huge thanks to all of the city staff that showed up and really answered a lot of questions for people in the community. Let's see, there's other things happening. Oh, yeah. I have a flyer. Okay. I did attend a planning meeting for this block party that's happening down at the St. Vincent de Paul Dining Facility. There you go, people. Wednesday, September 25th, there's going to be all kinds of great social services down there. So, and that's a partnership between St. Vincent de Paul, the Eureka Police Department, Community Safety Enhancement Team, and Eureka Main Street. Also, something, you know, I noticed in the news is, of course, there's, Eureka seems to be becoming home to more fast food chains. And yes, I do support development, and also, you know, I do have concerns about sort of a kind of ballooning of fast food in Eureka, but, you know, for various reasons, you know, we do have a lot of local restaurants that are, you know, really working hard to bring like local, locally grown and sourced food, that healthy food to the community. And I do think that most fast food industries aren't as locally oriented. And so, I would be interested in just looking at planning around this. Is this something that, you know, as a community, we want to be more aware of? Do we want to really think about where those restaurants are placed, or, you know, how many of them come in, how fast, and, you know, to be smart about growth in that particular industry? Just curious if anyone else is interested in that, or would be, just didn't take a look at that? Great. Okay.
I can't talk about it.
Yeah.
I was going to say, I'm not really sure what the direction is though, in terms of like, do we want to talk about this at another meeting, and what specifically is it that we're going to ask for?
Right. I do recall this issue had come up once before. I think Councilmember Castellano maybe talked about that a few months ago, and I think at the time, Rob Homland indicated that that could be something that could be looked at in development regulations, and I think we had some discussion that, right, that Broadway may be quite appropriate for continued uses of fast food restaurants, that type of thing, but not necessarily kind of old town and, I think, looking at it from that type of region. So, we can, we can have some more discussion about that, I think, with probably a study session-type format.
Great.
Okay.
And that's all for now.
All right. With that, I believe we can adjourn this meeting. Thank you.